Star of Law and Order, Kristen Shore.
Here.
Haley Keizer.
Here.
Chris McGuffin.
Here.
Stephanie Orner.
Here.
Debbie Klawes.
Here.
Shannon Donalds.
Here.
Paris Kelly. I have two agenda adjustments.
We have four agenda adjustments. The first one is the resignations via SONGA, WEGH, HMS, middle school social studies, seventh grade. Under employment D, seven hours, self-contained that's K4. And then under HHS, extracurricular, cultural, or student. You can call it HOPSC for change. So that would be essentially the first one. And then that would be how you get away. Then under athletics, to play great football, Special Olympics, taking power, middle school U of I. Middle school U of I. That's my your order, Chris.
Thank you. I have three approval minutes.
I make a motion that they're accepted as per sentence. Seconded?
Any discussion?
I have a question. If something was put through not according to the minutes, do we prove that or edit that?
You can.
You need a microphone.
Oh.
If something is something is changed from the minutes, so if the nurse position that was approved for five days would be is actually not listed as full-time, should we go ahead and change that or does that work?
We can amend, like we did last meeting. Kristen, we can amend the minutes if they're incorrect.
How do I know what we're talking about?
We're in discussion right now.
Well, that's just the new minutes. Do you mean was that the actual discussion then or?
Well, like we approved a nurse for five days and we kind of see it's listed for part-time. So why would we approve something? So we're just doing the minutes.
We discussed we discussed that a nurse we discussed that a nurse would be part-time and the CNA would be would be
LPN.
LPN would be full-time. So those were the options based on the funding available. So.
So what do we have, something that's wrong? Do you understand what I'm saying?
Can you point out to me where the minutes?
On the prior minutes? I'm saying the job that's posted is not does not match what they're about to approve. So I was asking, do you think that's why that came? Do we still vote to approve it as is and then amend it sort of thing?
Mike, could you address that?
I mean, we posted it to the young age position. It's a full-time position.
So the ones.
Why is it full-time?
LPN.
LPN.
I saw it as part-time.
I looked at it and was wondering, unless it says specifically says part-time, it should be full-time position.
Okay.
And certainly if it's not, we'll just change the posting and make sure it says does not say the part-time.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous. Takes us to item four, proclamations and presentations, committee acknowledgements. Anybody have anything for today?
No, it's been pretty quiet.
Takes us to beep public comments. Thank you all for attending tonight's meeting. We are about to convene into the public comment period of our meeting. While state law in main requires public comment item on agendas of a full meeting in the school committee, we also believe it's crucial for us to hear from our community members about their concerns and issues, and so we're pleased to have this as an agenda item. Having said that, please note that the committee is here to listen. The public comment period is not designed to be a discussion. According to, please do not expect the committee to respond to your concerns or questions tonight. This is because we take your concerns and questions seriously and want to have sufficient time to process and research the issues if need be. At the OSAT, we ask that the speakers identify themselves by naming in town residents. Also want to point out that under state and federal privacy laws, we are unable to entertain any comments or questions about school personnel or roles. Please know, however, that we take personnel concerns very seriously. On these matters, we ask you to go through the appropriate administrative channels. The committee will now entertain public comments from community members. Each individual speaker will be allotted in three minutes.
Am I allowed to just go?
Yeah. I'm sorry?
Am I allowed to just go?
You needed to sign up prior.
Can I do that now?
Excuse me, need me before the meeting began.
Okay. I'll next.
We'll start with, first one on here is Richard Seer.
Good evening, folks. Evening, folks. Thank Brian for coming to speak. Last night, I was talking about how language is used in schools and society and stuff like that. And I had mentioned without name or adjudication a school senior woman speaking. You had the teachers' union and the president mentioned that mother and I'm just asking for clarification that mothers and fathers could be stripped from the language and replaced with parenting burden person and non-burning person. That time you told me I couldn't speak to that, I did not tie any names, but there are all kinds of teachers' unions, unions in the United States. Are you able to address to me why you told me I couldn't say that?
I don't recall that term.
The second thing is that I see five X's, X's and three X Y that they're sex crimes on. They have one that determine whether you're male or female. Anything else is in your mind. So people who decide that they're female when they're really male have an advantage over women because they're built stronger, bigger, hung and bloodthirsty. And they should not be allowed to play these sports on women's. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up is Greg Newell.
Greg Newell, permit. I was really glad to hear that some of the board members liked the idea of pushing out these meetings and submissions via the push notification system. I think having a parent involved in supporting you all is a good, a great thing. I'm not looking for answers. I know I sort of asked questions and hopefully get answers later. I was wondering if the pad, the well for the pads is going to be fixed by the time the kids go back to school? And also is there any pre-plan to filter the water to bring a bad taste out of it? The other thing is, has the high school boiler been replaced? Will this be done before winter or not? Also, the auditorium group getting fixed or redone before or after winter? Again, I'm not looking for any answers right at the moment. From the last meeting, we were told there was 200,000 left over from the fiscal year budget. We can use those funds to get each teacher a $400 budget spend on things for their classroom. I know things are very expensive now and this would have a direct effect on our kids' education. If my numbers are right, the school would have, system has 90 teachers, which would result in spending of $39,400. The other 200,000, $39,600 we could use for fund. We should use those funds to fund the items that were cut from the from the budget, this year's budget, for example, the trends for the high school studies and one other thing. Only thing I would suggest is not to use it for positions, but again, using those funds to cover things that were cut would be great. And I'm not sure of the process. Someone had told me that might even have to do like emergency meeting to spend those funds. I would fully support that. To use those funds to cover things that weren't allocated in this year's budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Sean McRyder.
Sean McRyder, President of Urban School State Pass Air. I've come here with my opinions and thank you for still providing me the ability because you all took a oath under God to protect the Constitution. Speaking of God, I will share with you some of the things I learned Sunday in church. First one is to stay humble in victory. Now, my legal counsel is advising not to speak too much about the frivolous laws that get placed upon me using taxpayer dollars and try to deny me my opinion of my First Amendment rights, but we did have a major victory recently in RCU 22 where a judge ruled in our favor that my First Amendment rights were deeply violated by the entire community and school. One may draw parallels to your lawsuit against me. Second thing I learned Sunday in church was to stay connected. I felt an amazing positive support from the town of Herman and the taxpayers of Herman, the state and across our country regarding the work to expose educational issues. Not everyone knows my story, but I quit my job a year ago June to devote myself full-time to this effort and this mission, others of which have defined me as a columnist. I'm then paying these legal costs. You are attempting to sue me out of pocket and I'm still looking for financial help. So if anybody has the ability to personally pitch in, it is Gibson go slash Sean McRyder. And three, stay connected by building relationships and caring me and God by serving others. I've made hundreds of new friends and allies in here through these last two years. I've lost a handful, but gained back tenfold. I've tried very hard to regain a personal relationship with certain school members on the stage wanting to be rebuffed, but I've remained. Now, the only thing that I also believe in now is that I'm serving God, I'm also serving others and protecting their First Amendment rights to protect the free speech. And I'm now speaking for local, state and national groups, through parents, taxpayers and the teachers who feel they don't have a choice because of cancel culture. You knew people elected and those watching, there are only two things that the First Amendment is not protected from. Obsessiveness is one and it's very hard to find. Secondly, it's inciting violence, something I've never done or never planned to do. See, I have a clean record and those who really know me know that. I will endeavor to be as kind as I can, but that's a matter of individual taste. If you find it caustic or unpleasant, you must accept that because that's part of a constitutional republic. You cannot think what is written or said is unfair or false or malicious. The third of the Constitution, every citizen has a chance to speak their mind. And under matters of public concern. And you can withhold matters of public concern from citizens or the press, and I'm a member of both. You, Chairman Jesse Keith, and you, school board, are the government. In a democratic, not democratic, non-society, one who assumes the act for citizens and an executive or judicial capacity must expect that his official acts can be criticized. Such criticism towards the government and any of its employees cannot be puzzled or deterred by courts at the very instance of government officials. This is from New York Times versus Sullivan. You may want to use some homework on this. In closing, I plan on respecting your First Amendment rights. Were you as members of the Herman School Board also? First item on. Thank you for your opportunity to speak.
Thank you.
That's okay. Thank you.
Next up is Regina Leonard.
Hi there. My name is Regina Leonard. I'm a mom of two boys here in Herman. I've been trying to address the lack of transparency for years since my oldest at the middle school over seven years ago, and I can testify to you all that it's only getting worse. Parents have a right to know any and all information that is presented to our children at any age and any grade. Transparency is not complicated, yet your unwillingness to be truthful is evident that you don't care about parents or our children. You're getting paid out of your way with little to no accountability for now. Not taking parents' concerns seriously has driven parents to use FOA requests as a last, last-ditch effort to get information. You don't seem to mind continuously spending our tax salaries on liquor bills. Last winter, I addressed controversial books and materials being taught or provided to our innocent children. A middle school friend told me that they're not in our school and it's not the job of the school to teach pop culture. However, I found many books that are highly inappropriate for anyone who has access to. When I brought this to light, I was ignored. Why? I addressed it to the school committee after being ignored and I asked it to be on the agenda and again was ignored. Why? This is a much more complex issue than filing a complaint over one book. The fact that I've had to do my own research, even find this material is wrong. If people don't know what to look for, they don't know what's there and available to their children. I quite frankly was shocked when I found what I did. This issue as a whole needs to be addressed. This needs to be on the agenda. When Milk and Honey, which is rated 18 plus mature, the book going for vote tonight is brought to you, you turned your head and said you didn't want to see it. It was inappropriate for your eyes and you better protect our children. I ask you both to remove this book and treat our innocent children to when you want yours treated. The school may have gotten away with shady actions for quite some time, but I can speak on behalf of many. Accountability is on the way. We are a community who wants transparency and we need to trust our school system. The stress that this has caused by the school's total disregard, the community's concerns is alarming and it's time to change it now. Thank you.
Thank you. Last is Ruth Colley.
My minute doesn't start like it up here. Mine's a simple question or comment. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I just want to mention that when you report, if you don't use your mic, I can't hear from you. I have medical issues and I can't usually come. That doesn't count, I think. I just want to say I was pleased to see that non-curricular groups or clubs are allowed equal access to initiate the clubs or groups. And students get academic credit or participate in the club or group. And I was really pleased to see that. I do have a couple of clarifying questions which you probably can't answer now, but perhaps if you keep minutes or something, then, because I probably can't stay physically for this. And if somebody has a non-curricular group or club, does this mean that a student must initiate the request for the club and lead the club or group? There was some dis- discommunication or conflicting information on the lab document of that on the last page. And the last thing I want to ask about that. Or is do you just ask that they be allowed to request access for a club that can be led by either a student, a teacher, an outside adult or organization? So if I'm a kid, you know, I might be put under, I might feel uncomfortable asking for a certain non-curricular organization or I might want to ask the organization to ask. And if I have to leave it as a student. So on the last page of the document, it says, it was a little bit unclear to me. It has to be student initiated or a teacher or an outside organization that initiated that. And you don't have to answer that now. If you need my notes, I can always give you a little question.
You can submit it. You want to submit that? I can take that. Thank you.
Oh, I live in Herman. I live in Herman.
All right, thank you. All right, that takes us to item five, personnel, pay resignations.
You have in front of you with the agenda adjustment, five resignations. You have Catherine Tool, she had been an English teacher here for several years, the arts, et cetera. Heather James, the safety and attendance monitor. Melissa Mixer is the head cook here with, well, she cooks for all buildings, but specifically at this kitchen here. Sarah Oshman here, an educational technician, had one of the middle school resource rooms. And obviously, Ms. Wedge, in social studies and secondary. For employment. We had the opportunity to get right on hold and have a very strong applicant named Kevin Barry. Has had students go through here and I think Mr. Walsh strongly recommended him for the HHS safety and attendance monitor. Mr. Walsh want to add anything? Pretty good?
Just a fact, he worked for FedEx for the last 30 years. Some people may know he delivered the package. He has a career background in HR. His degree is from University of Massachusetts. Hope you don't hold that against him. The interview, very well, one of the things I liked about him is he wants to get a job that he feels he can make a difference. He's not looking at this as a sprint forward. The board may recall we've had three different people in that position over the last four years. And so I'm hoping he will bring some stability to that. His HR skills are excellent. He's negotiating with an angry dog or an angry customer. I think he's going to be a valuable plus.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh.
Yeah, we should take these individually. Like you give a motion.
I'll make that motion that we employ or the board employs Kevin Barry as the HHS safety attendance monitor for the high school.
Any discussion?
This is not a new position, right? It's replacing. Is this what Brian said?
Any other discussion? All those in favor? It's unanimous?
We also have two educational technician positions. One, Sierra Tom for Ed Tech 3, that has elementary school. And I believe it's Karen, but David, am I wrong? Did you say the CH in that? Maybe it was Karen. I said it wrong. It's the first time I've heard. Becky and Karen who have Ed Tech 1. Both seem very excited and enjoying their own schools.
Motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation for Sierra and Becky.
One second.
Samantha.
Any discussion?
Didn't you have another one to that?
We're going to do Samantha last. Any other discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Any extensions? Motion carriers?
And the last hire is Samantha Hubble for self-contained at elementary school. I've had the privilege of working with Mrs. Hubble in a past life at my roommate at MSBA 41 and is coming over from RCU 19. Just finished up doing some administrative work with them. You probably recognize the last name. We also hired her husband to work in the, had the alternative educational technician. I thought that. So that he looks familiar, that's why. Very excited to get somebody. I thought she was retiring and retiring. She is here this evening. I saw her walk in. I thought she was here. There she is. Yep, waving. And she is here, Samantha. So here, excited to be bringing her name to you for that position at the elementary school.
Motion to approve Samantha Hubble.
One second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Any extensions? And motion carriers?
Agenda I, MC, just for your information. So if there's an asterisk, you know, you can see that it's just near the position. There are several new people, for the most part, most are returning and obviously appropriate for athletics here. I'm going to kick off in September, most of them. So those are for your information.
Any questions or discussion before we move on on that? Item six, old business, A, excuse absence of school committee members. I don't believe we have any. Takes us to seven, new business, A, motion to nominate for a local delegate to MSBA Annual Delegate Assembly.
So this was in your packet. Jody put in a, just a brief synopsis of that. Was, and we're looking for one committee member to attend that. It is a new attendance, so you don't have to actually go to Augusta and then we will be looking for one alternate. There are actually two dates. We have September 20th. And that is, that one's only a couple of hours. Actually, it's just under an hour. It's about an hour and a half. That starts at 6:00 PM. And that's a regional meeting. There's, there's nine regions across the state. And so that would be a regional meeting with main schools for the board of directors. And then there's one on October. There's another one on October 22nd. That is on Saturday. But it is important for us to send a delegate and it's, I think it's just a great opportunity for board members to go. And I think we've had some organizations that here, we have gone in the past, if they have enough to speak to about that and why it is useful, why it's helpful. Well, that, we're looking for one delegate, an alternative or black delegate.
I'll just add that I did this last year. This is just a, it's a good opportunity to meet peers across the state and in the region. And you'll spend, whoever does it will spend, most of the time is spent looking through the resolution package. I believe all of you should have received that from MSBA. If you didn't, let me know. If not, you most likely have that as an agenda. You didn't get it? I'll forward you the email from MSBA. We'll most likely have that as an agenda item to just open up for discussion of any of the resolution, the max meeting, what they were.
Anybody interested? I have a little October 22nd.
Are you interested? I don't know much about it because I didn't get the information. Go ahead. With our agenda different?
Yeah.
Oh, just that?
Yeah. It came out about four days.
It happens every year. It's something that's ongoing. It's just that we take turns.
I'm happy to rotate in this year.
Okay.
Good. Thank you, Kristen.
I'll make a motion to nominate us.
Seconded. Seconded.
Any discussion?
That was really fast.
Yes, because there's a song for fantastic.
All those in favor? All those opposed? Any extensions?
Let me ask.
Okay.
And our move.
And I believe Mr. Grant need an alternate as well, right?
Yes.
I'm fine with being alternate. No one else wants to be alternate. I would move to accept just to keep this alternate.
Seconded. Sorry.
I didn't know alternate had people in them.
Yes.
Any discussion?
We're slow. Yeah.
All right, all those in favor? All those opposed? Any extensions? All right, Mr. Grant, I'll take B.
So we met on July 11th. We are now obviously meeting August 1st. Our next scheduled meeting is September 12th. That is obviously about six weeks away. We still have, I believe, we still have fifty minutes until the obviously, that's a very social base, we have two food service positions to fill and we have this, this is what it leads me now, and most likely this med tech position. So I'm asking for the board, for to hire teachers during this month of August rather than getting until September 12th. So we are getting At the meeting on twelve, that order then, and then we'll come back to the school there to obviously approve any hires after that point.
Uh, commission to give superintendent grant authority to hire teachers during month of August.
Seconded.
Any discussion?
Yeah, just comment. Mike, I'm assuming you've sent us an email or something, just let us know what, if you find quality people.
Yeah.
Still send out the protocol, send out the resumes and let me know that I want to offer this person a position, give you an opportunity to review and then offer a very appropriate time and style by inviting someone.
Any other discussion? All is in favor? All is opposed? Any extensions? Motion carriers? See school committee email accounts.
This, I don't believe needs action, but I'd like to make you aware and I initially put it on just because I didn't understand, or I assumed, I assumed that the day after the meeting, July eleventh meeting, I had IT set up the current school, the committee members with email accounts and when typing them into Gmail, you just see the right first name, last name, I didn't really want to see what follows that as far as, you know, at whatever. And so when I found out that the, there were not permanent at schools, permanent at email accounts for the rest of our school rooms, I just feel like that's an appropriate platform in which we should communicate. We obviously have a variety of communication, our public officials, everything, there are many things that are available, so it's just a lot cleaner. I've had that request from some of you anyways to not email in your private accounts because you're great, you've got your John Mail account, you've got your My Kids School account and your Visa account, whatever else that you know you might have. So I went forward and authorized the creation of those accounts and we just wanted to make you aware and we were all aware at that point because that's how we send out the packets. But I didn't know if there was any additional discussion. I think it's also good for the public to hear that they can reach you that those, you know, first name, last name, at schools, permanent, and everybody's on the same platform. That being said, I cannot set those up for RSU eighty-seven members yet because I did not know if there was an official RSU eighty-seven email to review all or if you would also, obviously, there are things you can vote on and so I'd be more than happy to do that for our RSU eighty-seven members as well.
Our board doesn't do it individually. We do it to, we have one email for, it's our board of directors and it comes from all of us. So I don't know if you wanna make us new ones or whatever.
Should have one, maybe one.
Shannon, can you just repeat what you said?
Yeah, our board just has one email goes out to RSU, we accept four numbers and we're all attached to it. It doesn't go to us individually, so we all kind of, we use our own emails.
Okay.
Whoever you want to do it. If you want to set a new one, it's for us, that's all.
So it's kind of hidden underneath it?
Yeah. Do you want to do it that way?
If you were both okay with that, I'm okay with adding another email.
Sure.
It is a bit of a communication, but it's, it would be nice if you could just set up a domain, here are the packets, here are the resumes and things like that.
Absolutely. Yep, we're fine with that.
Okay, that takes us to D, appeal of review committee decision on instructional material. So I'll start with per our policy at this point of appeal, if the representing party so choose, the board will receive testimony from them. First, Mrs. Keizer, I just want to just confirm, will you be recusing yourself from voting tonight in the conflict of interest?
That's a pretty good question. I'm also a parent and there are other conflicts of interest that have been going on recently. So, no.
Okay.
I don't feel like I can draw my vote.
Okay. So first, if they would so please, we'd like to hear from complainers Ryan and Haley Keizer.
Put it down there?
Yeah.
Well, this is different. I filed to have the book, Moment I Drew, in the school, mostly because it is rated for a mature audience. It contains graphic photos, in terms of their sketches, of sexually explicit material. Whether this book is checked out or not, it's inappropriate for children or any minor to be looking at indecent photos of nudity, homosexual, rape, and abusive nature. I have a copy, so. It's also a state crime to provide sexually explicit material to minors and I believe I had sent an email at least to some superintendent explaining state law over providing that material to minors and maybe to an entire audience, our whole library and books, the things that talk about those. Children that are exposed to scenarios where they might find this book as a resource should seek proper guidance and help. I don't believe that they're going to gain that from reading a book of poetry that makes more a mature agenda, that's something that a minor can't understand how to accomplish a problem with a classified material. So I don't feel like there's any benefit of being in our library. And for those who say that the library is for my, for the public, it is not open to the public for years. I don't know if there's a technicality to how to get books out, but I have to see. It's not open to the public. I tried to pay for it, I was almost for my children, I wasn't able to get access to it. So anyone that wants to say that they provide that trash to children or to adults and may arrive, it's not over. And lastly, when I first applied to have this room, I needed a solution which led us to have these materials in a lock environment where it has parental signatures that I sent out and at least provided this solution, which was not acknowledged. So, any questions?
I know we have a procedure around books. Was the proper procedure followed where the librarian was reached out to and then the principal of the school?
So I did not contact the librarian. I figured that first of all, instructions aren't on the form and then I didn't go with the librarian because I didn't want to remove it and the superintendent wanted to remove it and so I just went through. Here we are. It didn't get removed even though I did the form and I gave the superintendent and the principal and I supposedly read it and so it didn't work anyway. So is that a reason to keep the book in there because I didn't go with the librarian first?
Well, as you know, we have policies and procedures to follow, so I was just curious. And I'm curious from Mr. Walsh, how many, if, he might not even know this because he's not the librarian, but how many people have signed this book out?
Does that matter?
I asked Mr. Walsh a question.
To be clear, Mr. Walsh, we'll have to give up in just a second. I, when I received the form, I missed, it was my fault, I should have directed her to meet Mr. Walsh first and I went right into the review process. So I missed that part of the policy and went, and we had, for the committee, the committee reviewed that policy. The committee made its decision, said it to me, and I sent that to Mrs. Keizer and she's obviously following the appeal process to the school.
Anything else for Mrs. Keizer? Good, thank you. And I apologize, I missed you, I didn't catch you standing up. Did you want to, do you want to speak yet?
Hi, Mike Haggerty, Hernan May. Uh, this is a letter from my daughter.
Can't hear you, I'm sorry. It's hard to hear.
I'm sorry. Mike Haggerty, Hernan May. Uh, this is a letter from my daughter, who's a student here, she's a junior last year. Read is an experience I've had in a long, including people that I know. And as much as I'm young, I'm curious to be aware of the traumatic experience, I would never imagine exposing them in a graphic portrayal of it written in Milk and Honey. Many readers like me dive into stories and connect with many characters. When the character experiences conflict, we find ourselves looking for ways to solve it. When the character achieves a goal, we can, we can't help but be proud of them. This is a moment I'm almost happy to share. And when a character gets put through an experience such as this, as descriptive as the story is, we can always feel it ourselves. It's a hundred percent not the same as it is for the victim of such a disgusting act. But what we read will always be part of us, especially with someone whose mind is still developing. When shown in such a realistic way, this type of situation in movies and films is rated up or at least mature. So what makes you think it's okay for a written version to be in a high school? A high school full of confused, hormonal teenagers as young as thirteen who apparently come to their exit through the act. Children go to books to escape stress of the outside world, but if they stumble upon a story with a situation such as this, it sticks. Society already organizes many terrible things as it is, but bringing anything to that by exposing them, you, that's your choice here. As I assume myself, I hope you make the right decision. Should want to read this yourself, but I shouldn't ever say. Still, I agree, you're seventeen.
Thank you.
So, I'm dead. I'm waiting over there. Good evening, Brian Consillo, Hernan May, two emission drive. I have two children in the school district and I have what we know is only the committee. Prior to that meeting, I took the time to go on the internet and go on our company webpage to see what our policies were in regards to standards and guidelines related to multimedia and mass media standards. And I heard that the committee used a policy in their review of this book, a policy which I would love to have the opportunity to see and so that I can also see. I'm not sure whether there is actually guidelines though that would cover vulgarity, violence, and sexual acts that are covered, which are today's book. So without that reference, I have a recommendation to the committee that if there is a reference that we'll need to provide at that, that if there is a reference to make it available for the citizens of the town so that we could see that in self-educating, so that we're better prepared to talk intelligently with the committee on what the guideline, rules, and standards are for books that are introduced to our children. In the absence of that, I think the committee, the school committee should form a group and write our own standards, guidelines, that will outline the context that is allowed within our schools. And I think that there are many people that would appreciate and support that within our community and I think would be greatly supported, that it would be able to give our ability to have our moral and social standards enforced within our institutions. So without a reference to be able to talk to you intelligently tonight in my fellow citizens, I went to something that would be what I would call a common standard and Mr. Haggerty had already referenced that and that is related to our. So I went to the FCC to see what sorts of things are allowed to be on our TV and as a common person standpoint for you tonight, I have been under the impression that if something is passed by the FCC, it's going to be on TV, on network or cable network, it is not overly vulgar and is not having excessive violence or sexual content. So I'm using that more or less as a reference to move forward tonight. So specifically to the book, Milk and Honey, I did do a little bit of research online to see what this book of poems contains. And while there are varying reviews and comments on its need to be available for teens and for young adults and the validity of the information provided, there was one common thread that all those that provided a comic or review would either agree to or not refute and that was that there was sexually explicit material within the book. Under that sexually explicit material within the book, then it would mean by common guideline that it would not be approved by the FCC to be on TV and therefore I would expect it to be in my schools that my children would be able to see. But as to our library comments, one listed that the, several parents or members of the community said not to let parents know or if parents know that this book is in the library, they will be very upset and that is what's happening in our community now is that the parents and members of the community have found out that this type of material was in our library and now we're communicating to you that we are not happy with this content. More importantly, I found on Amazon, because we are in the rural, correct, most people bought this book on Amazon, so access to this book is not only for our library, but it's also on Amazon, that there were three reviews that came out that I would like to read to you that did not include the family so that you would have an idea of what people that have bought this book and actually provided it for the children. And the first one I'd like to read again, there's three that are from each one. Preview this book before giving it to your daughter. I did not see anything in the information about sexually explicit poems or graphic sprinkles throughout. There will be a page, page with something totally appropriate for middle-aged preschools. Then bam, you get hit with a shocking graphic verse. I tried to post example on my review and was denied because it was too obscene on Amazon and I said, there are some good messages for girls and women, but on the other hand, I may never be able to eat another cantaloupe again and I'm going to delve into that. The quality of writing is not an issue here because the shock value screams up so loudly. The next review, not what I expected, quote, "Border X-rated at times, feels like reading poetry from a teenage girl's diary, delve it into depression, rape, suicidal tendencies." Probably not a book that you want in a teen's hands to say the least. And then finally, confused. I'm not easily shocked. My main concern is that this book is being promoted by someone on YouTube aimed at twelve, thirteen, and fourteen-year-olds. I do not consider this modern poetry. As someone who has worked with adult survivors, I would say this is not a suitable reading, let alone for a teenager. One poem that I did personally review was a sketch of a new female with her legs spread wide and with a, with a poem nestled in between, which began, I think, very appropriate for the age of two to four people. As a school committee, you represent the best interests of the schools and the parents. Why would a committee support such a book in our school library with the knowledge that the book, that, with books that contain content and context that will challenge our acceptable morality and social standards, while upsetting the parents that you appear to represent? I don't like to leave meetings on bad note, so as I depart today, I would like to offer, if there is no policy, guideline, or standards for such material, because I do believe that there needs to be such for context and materials and we don't need to discuss specific books, I would be more than willing to join any committee that you feel fit to put together and provide assistance in putting such guidelines, policies, or standards together for our community. Thank you, David.
Thank you. All right, next, we'd like to hear from a representative or representatives from the review committee.
Good evening, my name is Brian Walsh, I'm the assistant principal. And I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the review committee that was formed to review the book, Milk and Honey, by Rookie Carr. Per policy, all members of this review committee read the book, I've covered it cover. This book has been available in the current school library since 2016, published in 2014. After sharing the book and having each committee member read it, we did indeed hold a meeting to discuss the complaints and respond to concerns and we go through the committee's findings. One of the things we did look for prior to meeting One of the things we did look for prior to meeting was a book rating system that Brian, I think, just mentioned. What we did find is there are many different book ratings. You may already know this from school. There is no, unfortunately, accepted guideline for books, like there is for movies. You may recall, the movie theater industry went to that during a Supreme Court case. Even though the Supreme Court changed the decision about four years later, they kept that and it's accepted format. There are none for books. What I did find, and what we were finding, was that the book ratings that are online are based on opinion, again, rather upon well-developed and defined guidelines and standards. So, book Milk and Honey is a collection of poetry about survival after a sexual assault. It addresses the themes of love loss, trauma, abuse, healing, and femininity. As you are aware, each year, some of our students do endure mistreatments of a sexual nature for sure on all different levels, and both loneliness and depression that can follow. Certainly, as a high school principal, we would prefer our students who have experienced this trauma to speak to their parents, to speak to a mandated reporter, to speak to their principal maybe, to speak to a guidance counselor, to speak to a therapist. Unfortunately, that always doesn't happen. And for those of you who know me, I unfortunately never had a student come up and speak to me about that. It's really important, from our committee's standpoint, that there is access to work, or this work of poetry, for the following reasons. First, we believe this work does provide students words to help describe and clarify what they may be feeling. Now, those words are mature. Those words are adult, there's no question about that. I'm not going to stand up here and tell you they're not, because they are. But it also allows students to know they're not alone, which to us is extremely important, because again, if they aren't talking to their parents, they're not talking to a mandated reporter, I would much prefer them look at a book, then pull out their cellphone, and do a search, and find out, I mean, let's face it, if all of those in the room are kids, I'll use adults' data phone, put two words in, and you can Google, and you're going to see the stuff that unfortunately we see too often as administrators. We found that this work does address a very uncomfortable subject of sexual abuse by family members and others in a way that we hope leads to healing. We found this work does encourage healthy relationships, hopefully with parents, based upon respect and listening, and acknowledges that some parents, unfortunately, are the abusers, and there are other outside influences and families. We found that this work does encourage keeping students' hearts and bodies safe, and hopefully eventually living a balanced life. We found that this work does promote not being afraid of your own voice, for some of our kids hopefully finding that voice, and hopefully loving themselves, certainly they are. We found that this work reminds women that envy and regret exists. And sadly, we do see some of our students who, in fact, degrade each other. We found this work helps make clear that rape will not end a victim of sexual abuse. We found this work cautions against abusive relationships and encourages healthy relationships. We found this work encourages self advocacy, instead of hiding abuse and remaining silent. We found the work highlights the pain, sadness, and despair of bitter moments when abusive relationship ends, while providing comfort and hope for better days to come. And we hope this work will inspire students to continue with their healing and live healthy lives. As I said prior, no question, our committee agrees with this work of nonfiction poetry and sketches as mature things. We unanimously disagree that this work may cause psychological trauma, confusion, anxiety, and fear, suggested by the complaint. We know sexual violence is real. You probably all know, and the people in the audience probably know, according to the Maine CDC, one in five women will experience sexual assault or rape in their lifetimes. And sadly, this includes our students. We feel that this work does raise awareness of abuse and allow students to see themselves represented in material available to them in our library. The poetry found in Milk and Honey may also help students gain understanding and hopefully an empathy for those who experience sexual abuse in trauma. We feel that attempting to omit the stories of victims and abuse would create an environment in which some students feel excluded. Our school library is a place where students have access to a collection of diverse materials, as said earlier, and Milk and Honey is a part of that collection. A piece that we added here tested into the Maine Library Trustee Handbook, and we do have a full-time certified library here at this district high school. Those laws and regulations state under intellectual freedom, the First and Fourth Amendments in the United States Constitution, or interregional American library ownership. They are the basis of the concept of library installments, intellectual freedom. Intellectual freedom reports to all library users the right to seek information and receive information on all subjects and all points of use without restriction of what happens to the subject of one's interest, examine, or issue by law. Once again, the committee unanimously supports keeping Milk and Honey in the high school library as in our collection, as a book of choice. Any questions?
I have a few more, thanks for the conversation.
Yeah, any questions?
So, a few things. Do you have a Bible in your library?
We do.
We do?
Yeah.
And you can't unsee these things. So when you're talking about trauma, I think it was mentioned by another parent, I think it's an excellent point, you can't unsee the trauma of sexual content like that. And so for those that are innocent or haven't had to deal with these things, they can't help but see things that are in front of them.
I don't disagree. Can I respond or anything?
What's the question?
Oh, just questioning him. Do you, when this book is checked out, considering you're a mandated reporter, and considering it would possibly be from someone who's raped, do you mandate, do you report that it's been checked out and that person had followed us so that they may need to be assisted?
The system that we have does allow us to, who checks out a book, obviously. It does allow, yes, it does allow. We do not then take that name and report anything with that student.
If your theory is you have to keep it because these children are possibly being raped, wouldn't that be a good policy?
I'll be honest, I don't know if it would be, because frankly, if you're a student who was afraid to go to your parent, or afraid to go to a mandated reporter, or afraid to ask for help, I'm not sure that I would do what we hope it does. I think it might actually be the opposite.
But they need the support.
I do. I do not disagree with that one. And I do wish, when a student is sexually assaulted or raped, I wish they would ask for help, whether it's through us, whether it's to their physician. Most of the board knows we work with rape response, we work with mobile crisis. I'm not saying we, the administrators or teachers in the school, would be offering therapy to anyone, but offering them obviously the support and family the support to go to the next step.
By no means would I.
Any other questions? Any questions?
Brian, did you happen to know the answer to how many people have signed it out?
So, since the book, we received the book, 17 people have checked it out. Four of those were on the committee that had to read it. One person on the committee was able to get a copy from somewhere else. So out of the 17, four of those adults. We know it's been checked out, so prior to 2018, we were still allowing public to check out books out of our library. 2017, it's only switched over, and no longer will have the open access for those in the audience who are younger children who stand out open till 6 o'clock at night in the community. What we found when we looked at the numbers is nine students since 2016 have checked a book out. And then the other individuals were adults.
Thank you. And it's not being promoted by the teachers, it's just a resource of a book in the library?
That's correct. This is not a classroom read, just so we're, no one asked that, so we probably will. This is by no means a classroom read.
And so there's a policy about not having cell phones in school due to phones or the ability to search for certain materials while at school. Yet we're going to provide, and have books of materials that they could find on their phone in the school. Is that right?
So you may, sadly, you may have your cell phone in school. I would love to look forward to make a motion and say they can't have their cell phone in school. That would be fantastic.
How many in this, at the high school?
No, this is high school, so, yep, there's, yep. I would be 100% in favor of that down the road. The fact is, kids can have their cell phone in school, there are certain times they may use it, and certain times they may not. Our point was looking at it, that kids can pretty much find anything they want on their cell phone in seconds. That's one of the concerns, when you reach a certain age, you enroll with an iPhone, which some of us in this room are in an age group, it scares us what it can find. And the problem is, and again, we disagree on this book, the problem is what students are finding may not be best practice by any means. And that should be concerning to everybody at this school. One of the, Brian spoke before, and one of the things he brought up was policy, and certainly taking the review, taking the movie policies after this might not be a bad idea. Because the bottom line is, we all want to keep our kids safe. Whether we agree or disagree, that's what we want. We want our kids to be safe, we want our kids to be okay, we want kids to get help when they need it. And so that's, with our committee recommending keeping this book in the library, that's the intent. It's not, we're going to pass this around 500 or 600, 600 kids. It's going to be, if a student needs it, and a student searches it out, and a student finds it and checks it out, it's available to them.
Any other questions?
I just made one other comment.
Please.
The other position that we're trying to hire is English teacher at the Anne Theater. If you know anyone certified, we start three weeks from tomorrow, and I need a teacher, so that's the other position that I would mention. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Yes.
Danielle Honey, Barbara Herman. I wasn't going to talk, but I decided to come up. So, my full transparency, I actually bought this for one of my daughters when she was 15 years old. I realized about visiting the content of the book. This weekend, we were all together, and my other daughter, who you've heard from, was talking to me about the letter, what she wanted to say, and all of that. And my other daughter heard it, and she's like, "I read that book." And I was thinking, my eyes probably got so big, and I was like, "You have?" And I'm like, "Where did you get it?" And she said, "Bam, I'm the one who bought it." And I then proceeded, then she proceeded to tell me that it was traumatic for her to read the book, that it made her incredibly sad, and that she was stuck on that because she felt the emotions of the person, and she thought that it should not be in the school. So, I did want to provide that information for you guys to consider making decisions.
Mr. Chair, can I have 30 seconds?
Thank you.
30 more seconds?
Yes.
I wish I knew, whilst you were almost speaking, because I'm not supposed to talk over people, but I had a nice conversation with them.
Sorry, Brian, I didn't finish here.
Yeah, no, I had a sharing a nice conversation with them about this subject, so... The point, the biggest point that I have to you as a committee is not the name and the specifics of the book. That you as a committee, in my opinion, you as a committee, your role is to ensure that the content is correct.
Into the microphone.
That the content of the books are correct, not the context of the book. Listening to Mr. Walsh speak, I couldn't help but agree with some of his point. Majority of his points related to context. But if we have a policy, or a guideline, or you make a decision based on context, what does it say, what is our values of how vulgar, violent, and explicit are we willing to allow material in our facilities? Whether, and I made a point, you say multimedia, mass media. Is it music? Is it videos? Is it books? What is your guidance and standards on that? And not get stuck in the context, which admittedly, this book, I mean, I know it's a question, but the committee says that the context is helpful. Who am I to say the context is not helpful? But I am a layperson that can look at the content and say that it is vulgar, it portrays violence, and it is sexually explicit. That is why that's the music committee rule, when we look at these types of books, not this specific one. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes.
Danielle Honey, I just want to point out, Mr. Walsh, let me back up. I really love this idea of us looking further into this and having some sort of a policy, which is something I think that she was like so on earlier. This book is rated 18 and over. So, my child who's under 18 has access to this material, and me as a parent has no idea that they've been exposed to that, I need to help them. And I understand there are situations where parents are involved, or this child can be possibly abused by their parents. But there's parents like me, that are trying to raise children right, and I want to know exactly everything that my child has access to. And the fact that this is an 18 and over rated book should be your answer. That right there is it. When it comes to the cell phone, yes, they have access to that. I have that, I have control as a parent, and again, maybe not all parents check. I am hyper diligent with my child's phone. It is directly connected to mine. And I can see everything that he does, so I can help him if he ends up coming across something he shouldn't be, which he has been exposed to. It happened in this school, I get it. But I am able to support him. And that's apparent as a control, yet he can go to the high school when he's there and check this book out, and I have no control or right of knowledge if he's able to get this book. That is the issue entirely. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion from the committee? Mr. Garian, do you want to provide a recommendation? No.
So, I obviously, I spoke to our attorneys this afternoon, and they do not believe that anything in the book constitutes sexual, I'm going to actually read that to you. They do not believe that this qualifies under Title 17A, Main Criminal Code for Sexual Exploitation in minors. They said it does not portray, and it has to be sexually explicit conduct, meaning the following acts. So there has to actually be like a photograph of this. Sexual act, bestiality, masturbation, sedativeistic abuse, sexual stimulation, mood exhibit of genitals, anus, or the public area of the person. I apologize if our kids in the crowd are listening and reading these. And then obviously, conduct that creates the appearance of both A and E. And in light of that...
Mr. Chair, point of order, if I may.
What is it?
May I approach the microphone?
No.
That's not finished.
Let him finish, and then you can have, you can give him up for discussion.
Okay. Thank you.
So in light of that, my recommendation would be, when you look at policy IJJ, and you look at Section G, I think we all have a personal standard in which we would obviously hold to certain items, especially as parents. But that being said, we follow policy. And so the policy here is that the committee was established and appointed. They did appoint, I did appoint, who I believe were the content experts in the particular field. They did review that committee, and they reviewed it objectively, and in its full content, they evaluated the terms and needs and interests of the students, which I understand Mr. Walsh looked to very effectively tonight. They considered differing opinions, and then obviously reviewing in the light just the initial selection, which was six, seven years ago. And so I think you're evaluating whether or not the committee did its job. Your job is not to put a push your job, it's to evaluate what the committee did, and that's the part the committee brought, hold the appeal. And I believe that the committee obviously did what it was, and so they have, with all of that recommendation, I think that's what you should be charging them.
Did you say you did that with a nurse? Is that what you said, the two nurses?
No.
What did you, who did you ask? I didn't leave the beginning. I believe or not, I can't hear if the microphone was that way, the sound. Or did you review that when you first started? Who did you say you talked to?
Our attorneys.
Oh, attorneys.
Sean Garian, Mr. Chair, do you have the superintendent, can you read that code again about sexually explicit activities?
Can you read what the... Just reread what the, what you just said. Can you ask him what? Which line?
You mentioned a couple laws and sections, I believe, with the lawyer's reference, about sexual activities not being shown in the book. And there was a specific to that, I mean, criminal codes on that there. Something 17, something...
What's your question?
So, just to be clear, so I think what I heard from the superintendent, is that the lawyers and other parties have said that there's no sexual materials referenced in this book. That's clearly not the case. You didn't say that? The lawyers didn't say that? That I missed you, that's why I'm asking you if you read what you said. Anybody else in the comments here?
Sure.
Okay. Could you please clarify and reread?
Seventeen.
That's seventeen A, whatever you said from the lawyers, please.
Just, Mr. Grant, just reread the statement of the chairman.
Seventeen A, main criminal code, definition, sexually explicit conduct, meaning any of the following acts, sexual act, bestiality, masturbation, sedative, statistics, using abuse for the purpose of sexual stimulation.
All right, I'm not ready.
So, definition, nude exhibition of genitals, anus, or public area of a person, or exhibition is considered nude, a exhibition is designed for the purpose of eliciting or attempting to elicit a sexual response, meaning as a viewer or, that the content creates inherent to acts compared to that of A and E, also exhibit as any uncovered or covered portions of genitals, anus, or pubic area.
All right, so it's also masturbation, sexual touching, those are everything. Specifically in this book, it says, "The therapist places a doll in front of you, and sighs as girls around the legs touching." The point is, you point to the spot between its legs, the one he fingered out of you like a confession. Okay? And it also states, with a picture, and I don't know if anybody can see this at home, of some of these fingers that were in a child's vagina. And it states, "You must have known you were wrong, your fingers were dripped inside, dipped inside of you, searching for honey that would not come from you." And there's various positions of sexual, multiple sexual positions, this one looks like maybe a paddle girl, I don't know what this one is, maybe a wheelbarrow nose. But to say that this book does not contain any references to that code is absolutely, without question, false. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
One last thing. How come I didn't get a copy of that from a lawyer to read in the package? So that I could have known.
I didn't put this today, but I was planning to, but we didn't turn it today.
Any other discussion? We'll need to take a vote on this, so just on process, we'll, we'll need a motion and a vote to either overturn the rule, or uphold the review committee's decision. And then, based on that decision, that vote, Mr. Grant will draft up an opinion or statement, and we will review and approve that statement at the following regular meeting.
I missed that, can you say that second part again?
Yup. So, we'll make a, there'll be a motion and a vote tonight, whether to uphold the ruling of the, of the review committee, or overturn it. Okay. Approve or deny the appeal tonight. And then, Mr. Grant will draft up a statement based on our decision tonight, that he will then bring to the next regular meeting for us to review, get in our packages, and we'll make a, we'll vote if that statement is accepted, and we all agree to it.
So, clarify, approved appeal means that you want the approval? Because he, he just worded it in a way that it's not clear that we're all agreeing.
So, it would be, it would be deny the appeal, because you made the appeal, so it's deny the appeal, or approve the appeal, meaning approve it, like, we'll move the vote. So, does that make sense?
Yeah.
And then, why he said dissemination, excuse me, why he is saying written, is because the last line is, "The board announces decision, writing away," and then the conclusion from the next word in the word we're reading.
Do we have a motion?
How do you want to word it?
Either approve the...
I made a motion to approve the appeal, and to remove the vote.
Do we have a second?
No, you guys did.
Any other motions?
I make a motion to deny the appeal, uphold the committee's decision, with further discussion at policy committee regarding addressing content and context, and coming up with standards to move, to review this, as well as other books that are brought to our attention, or that we review ourselves.
One second.
Any discussion? All of us in favor? All opposed? Any abstentions? What's your reason for abstention?
Confrontation.
Okay, the motion carries. That takes us to item eight reports.
Just my own word, this evening. Obviously, probably solved, but that continues to climb as we progress into getting our last few invoices. I shouldn't say few invoices, but as we finalize our last invoices, initially in July, it looked like we were gonna be around two hundred and eighty. But the, we've had several special education invoices that have come in over the last few weeks, and we've expended about a hundred and five thousand subsequently since that meeting. So, we're, we're now down to about a hundred and seventy-five thousand. I think Jamie is, is Jamie here? Jamie, do you dare speculate if that will decrease anymore, or is...
It will. May I come up?
Yeah, please, yeah.
So, when we get to this time of the year, with closing out of this year, there are invoices that are still waiting for shipments to come in, or invoices themselves to arrive. So, it's not unusual for this process to be dragged out to this point. There are also several entries that we need to make as part of the audit process. That is why this number is so fluid at this moment. When we get closer to the final pieces of the audit and ask for hearing the financial reports for our auditors, we will have a more concrete number. I do anticipate that that number is going to continue to go down, just based on some of the entries, the transfers that I made to the meeting. And I do know that we still have several thousand dollars worth of invoices that we are waiting to, to still come in, or things that were purchased before June thirty.
Thank you, Jamie.
You're welcome.
Technology, we, all right, we're about this, obviously, still waiting on a finalized contract piece with two oh seven brought in. However, we're under a membrane of understanding right now, to which they are paying that internet, no, not two internet fibers that are into the school. So, they're paying that bill and maintaining that equipment. And we're just working on the final buyout, excuse me, not buyout, a, what would you call it, a early termination, so that both sides are protected, should either party become dissatisfied with the agreement. So, that's, that's the final piece, and I think we are getting really close on that. In addition, Mr. Wheeler can read this form, and hopefully it's in English, it is in English, but it's understandable. We have two major DNS servers, and we had some significant upgrades that occurred this weekend. These were likely to burn through our equipment, those are your numbers to your addresses, and they're called, like I said, they're called DNS servers. Bankrupt team provided a complimentary penetration test, and tested our firewalls back at the beginning of the year, and these two servers were deemed very suspect to be external penetration tests. And so, these have been cleaned up, and they have dropped off, there's a, if you remember, I showed you in one of our meetings, there's a, like a series of high risk, low risk, medium risk, they've fallen off quick risk category to be penetrated. So, that's really good for us. And additionally, we've also brought some of the other, it's called a C panel. Again, I'm just reading this because he said this is important, and, you know, that our security is important, it's a primary concern. We've deactivated a couple of websites, like AppIntact.org, because it was archived, and it's just, it's a low liability to us. And so, we're continuing to take, there were fourteen items that were identified, and I shared with you all. And so, we've taken care of, Bankrupt is taking care of three of those, and that's a recent insert, so I'm really happy if the processing issues are great to take place. Last thing that I would say, this was brought up in the last meeting, and I do have some final information. So, I believe it was a voting at the, at the last meeting, and a concern regarding voting at the elementary school, I misquoted who that brought that up, I apologize, but I have talked, sent an email initially to Mr. Paul, and then obviously, to Mr. Barry, and then I was on vacation last week, Jamie got to meet with them regarding changing the voting location, because we do feel like the elementary school is not the most secure place for voting. However, it is more complex than just person changing. There have to be steps followed through the state, when we change the voting place. So, we're working on changing for June. There is not a lot of time to change for November. And I will get into the collective bargaining during that improvement. So, right now, our goal is to work with the armed sheriff's department on increased coverage for that day, and really try to block that building down from lunches or the classrooms. And I don't want to get into the whole plan, just because this is a public meeting, but we want to make sure that that building is secure for November. We anticipate a very high order turnout, obviously, in the electoral election, and then finding an alternative location for June, moving forward. I have a couple ideas, and if they are, when he gives me, if this is what the state has to have, you have to have for the state, I'll offer another site, which I think, I have another site picked out, and if that meets and fits the bill, we will execute that, and I'll bring it to you all to, for approval.
Can I add something along the technology? Thank you for all the work that you're doing along those lines. I think that it's important for us maybe to add a little bit more detail into the minutes, so that folks that aren't here tonight have the opportunity to see all the work that's been done.
I think that this is definitely something that, obviously, I just brought it, so that's something we could add to the minutes as well, from, from this meeting.
Will we be able to, and maybe this doesn't go under administrative, but will we be able to find out the results of the workshop that happened in July, too?
Yes. Yes, thank you for bringing that up. Under administrative workshops, we had a really excellent two days, had almost, actually had all the administrators there, that was July, I believe it was the twentieth and twenty-first, or the twenty-first and twenty-second. We talked about school level academic curriculum attendance and behavior goals, and we also talked about district-wide, not so much behavioral attendance, I would set a district goal for attendance that would be, that would be appropriate at my level to do that. Curriculum goals, safety and security, and so that all the principals and myself, we present to you their year law goals, and there's a panel of reports.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions or comments on the administrative reports?
Mike, I have a quick one. Also, the trading, the trading that's coming up, is that happening here? On the fifteen, first one, twenty-three trading?
Yes, just email you all to your attorney, an invitation to the August fifteenth, six o'clock, trading with our attorney, Michael Lucher, from Ryan Woodson, year number sixty-seven. And he is cleared for that at six o'clock on the fifteenth, which is Monday. That's from Ryan Woodson.
It's not any report, but I have to ask, can you clarify and answer the water question, or the testing of water, or the wells? Would you be able to give us some information on that, if you have a chance? I know you were, are they drilling a well because of the, why are they doing that?
The, I believe it was because of the, Mr. Davis here, the pump, if we did go deep enough, the pump didn't work. I know the water is not tasty.
I've heard that over the school too, so I was wondering if we had any information from you.
And we do test, though by state law, we do test that, I believe it's monthly, Jason Davis could, I can have him speak to where that progress is, and we can set up a board of work, and we'll see what happens.
Sure. So, you'll recall last year, we had to shut down school for a couple of days because a part of the pump went in our well? When they looked at that, examined the existing well, they said that we're kind of lost last leg, the next time it goes, it's gonna go for good. So, we're being proactive and putting a new well in. I don't believe they have started it yet. I talked to Mr. Davis, not my husband, Mr. Davis, just Mr. Davis, and he said that they will be starting it in some time and speaker next week, with the hopes of it being ready before school starts. If it's not ready, because there are some water testing that they have to do to make sure that the water's safe to drink, we are going to have any of the water filling stations, have water arrive, until we make sure that the water has passed all the tests that we need to have it pass, so that it's going to be mobile by students. But the well will be in, so that we can use the facilities, just maybe not drink the water in time when the school starts.
In the September board report, the plan is to have all the sales projects updated, because obviously, it's not a year old, like the roof just got finished, just paid a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollar invoice today. So, the year for the network was finished, and one of the public complaints was where the projects at. And so, that, the water was getting replaced, and hopefully, September twelfth, you will have an update on where all the projects landed, and hopefully, it will all be, they're done and completed and updated.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, that takes us to facilities and track committee. Neither committees have met, and I don't, I am not aware of the track committee meeting for the foreseeable future. Finance committee, we have not met. Policy committee?
We haven't met, but we have a meeting on Wednesday this week.
Okay. Three, four?
I think it's too early.
We'll, we'll post it.
I think it's too late.
I don't know. I think it's too early. Jesse, can we go back to the track? Why there might not be an update? Is it because of the cost, or...
I haven't heard. There hasn't been a, a meeting scheduled.
I'll just... So, would we email Mr. Barry to get it on the town's agenda, or, I guess I'm just wondering, because I'm...
Or the, or the town council chair, who's also the chair of the track committee.
Okay. Holy male, both.
Can we put policy IJJ to the top of their list this week, so that we can...
Yes.
Get working on that. If there are any changes that we might need, as soon as possible.
Definitely.
Or any policy that might apply to the script.
Right.
Or any policy that might apply to the selection of material, because it might only be on just IJJ as well, some of the comments were...
Yeah, I think it was dated twenty nineteen, so it wasn't on the top of our list, as far as looking at dated ones, but we can move it to the top.
Tech committee?
We haven't met, but I'd like to suggest that we have a September meeting, so that we can really start to look at the one-to-one ratio, or maybe even October.
Yes, that is our biggest committee, as our teachers, so we will be sending our calendar invite for a couple of hits, so that we can get the teachers, IT, several administrators, obviously, myself, and, and I think it's, it would, it would, and yourselves, everything. So, we will be meeting September, October.
Can I go back?
We're also recording this meeting, so we're seeing how that goes. I know it's a little early, but we're trying to... a little early, but whatever, Dr. is going to show me the product maybe tomorrow or Wednesday, and then I'll pass it along, but you go ahead, see what you can.
Great. Cam, go ahead.
Which recording is the one that you are doing? There's been several cameras here tonight.
Yeah, oh, it's this one, okay.
Can we look to, in the policy committee, review policy BED and BEDH around public comments? Do we want to look to having it at the beginning, in the end of the meeting, or what would be best for that approach?
I, I believe that one was on the list from the last meeting.
Which was moved into 2020, right?
Yeah, I don't have them all memorized, but I think so.
I believe it was October.
2020, did she just mention that?
I believe so.
I meant the, the materials, well, it's 2019.
Right.
Anything else on tech committee?
Yeah, I just want to say one thing, so if it involves teachers and things and answers they may need to have for support, I'm willing to leave, I think there's like two workshop days in August, if that's more helpful, to have that stuff ironed out before school starts, but, I mean, I'm new to this, so I don't know what obstacles we run into for IT, but I'm willing and available to do that.
Thank you, yeah, they have, they typically have, looking at a few teachers now there. From, from a tech committee, we don't necessarily allocate support to that, that's usually something we do internally. What we'll do as a committee is, one of our primary goals is to sustain availability for, almost our whole district is one-to-one, and there's a huge cost implication, so we're going to look at how do we sustain the model that we're currently in, and setting a direction for our goals, our instructional goals. But as far as launching them off the ground, the technology should, isn't necessary very quickly.
I did know if there was a feedback or ideas that maybe we could pull from, but that's all I was asking.
Oh, certainly, I have feedback, or any advice, things like that, I'm sure. Anything else on tech? Okay. Uh, spruce?
Nothing, we haven't met, we'll get against this.
GHI, as reported, possible future agenda items, I'll just go around on, Shannon?
I'm all set, thank you.
Debbie?
Great, thank you.
Ailey?
Yes, so I wanted to see if you guys could post the public packet part on the website like the town council does, because that way, probably would eliminate TOB, and people getting requests for that, but that would be something that doesn't necessarily have to be on the agenda, it's something maybe we can look at tech or address. And did you say you test the water at the middle school too? The complaint was unfair as well. Do we know why it tastes bad? Does anyone know?
I would report that, are you sure you looked at that test? Because I'm sure that's a statement that I own.
Yeah.
Thickness, I don't know why, I heard it's got a-
He said it tastes like paint.
Yeah, it's got a thickness to it, but it passes.
This should be thickness.
It just appears it's breaking, oh, oh, oh. Yes, it has, it has a test, so if you feel that, you can probably still write it, so it's, it's not, I mean, it's, it's, sorry, I'm sorry. Anything else? Chris?
All set, thank you.
Steph? Kristen? Oh, I have just one, the, for the delegate, MSBA delegate, they will go through, and there will be a vote on the resolutions and the changes for the resolutions, so Kaylee, I'll forward you the note from MBSA.
Okay.
Did you get that, Chris? Okay. Just take some time to review that on your own accord in the next month, and there'll be an item on the agenda to bring up any, anything that you may disagree with, or want to discuss further, as part of those resolutions.
Sorry, I did want to do one. Is it possible, and probably that's one of the procedures we're already looking at, but the complaint process, only because I know when I, before I was on the board, and even being on the board, I go to the principals, or to the teachers directly with those questions, and I just think it's important for people to know that before coming to us first with an issue. So I'm not sure which, there must be a procedure for complaints?
Yes.
Okay, I, I think it's important for us to talk about that one.
I do think, it may have been six or so months ago, six or seven months ago, we talked about that, and we had it on the table, I believe, people, but it could be just a, just a good review, yeah. Okay. Uh, item nine, approval of warrants. I get a motion to, we should probably take it collectively.
Motion to approve the payroll and accounts payable warrants, as listed.
Second. Any discussion? All of us in favor? All opposed? Any abstentions? What's your reason for?
Haven't seen them. Or the supporting documents. We have seen.
Because?
Um, because we don't pay your warrants.
Just want to, I knew that, just for clarity, I wanted to make sure.
Lack of work, we don't, we don't sign your warrants, we do our own district.
Yep. All right, item 10, the motion to enter executive session.
Motion to enter executive session pursuant to 1M R S A 4056, F 807.